You should take that off the table. Table. You should take that off the table. Take that off the table.
No, I don't care about that.
Did, did you have to work on it today?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
Thirty, thirty-two seconds, I think.
I'm gonna sit over there next time.
So, what have you done with Brian and didn't he like do any smart in relation?
He would have brought it in us and then he would have had a restaurant. Would she have to call it, I don't think?
Yep.
Are you going tomorrow?
No, somebody has to work.
Gary? Well, doesn't she go to the judges?
Yeah, in between her sessions.
Oh, she's gonna do it by Zoom?
Yeah, so we did it at fourteen. But actually, so I have them on. And I have.
Well, there's not much going on tomorrow anyway, unless you, unless you wanna go to, it's not a black tie affair.
It's like you got some sun.
No.
That's a good place to be.
Yeah, I, I, I need some CDLs too, but they're not doing the ethics one anymore. In Nebraska, I have to have hours every year, so I used to get them up there.
Having six o'clock on the clock, I'll call a meeting to order, please stand and join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you have cell, if you have cell phones, please put them on mute. Roll call, please.
John?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Is there any reason for any of the members of the commission to abstain for financial conflict of interest or?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. We all have the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda unless there's changes to be made.
I have a change, there will be no executive session for personnel issues.
Okay.
On item eighteen, there will be for poor relief, but not for personnel.
I did have one thing really quick for personnel, if we could leave that on there, if that'd be okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I guess I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, Wanda, second by Dan, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Public comment.
Turn the thing on.
There we go, all right, Scotty Barman, big town of Mission Hill, one oh four South Finati. Hopefully you guys can consider this some good news. This, this weekend, I was at a state convention up in Watertown, and it was decided that the next summer's convention for the Grand Lodge of Free and Accepted Masons of South Dakota will be here in Yankton, and it will be a big celebration, we'll be celebrating a hundred and fifty years, so they've already got a parade planned for that weekend and everything, and there's gonna be more stuff coming, so. People from all over the state, surrounding states, so hopefully a huge influx, influx of taxes being collected that weekend, so. Just thought I'd give you guys a little bit of good news, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scotty.
Appreciate it.
You can just leave that on.
Thirteen zero one three, Currie.
Hi, my name's Bob Currie, and I've been asked to represent the homeowners.
Bob, will you say your name again, please?
Bob Currie. I reside at three one zero seven zero Star, Starview Drive, Yankton, South Dakota.
I, I read, instead of Bob, I read one three zero one three.
I, I heard that, but I answered a lot of things.
Well, thank you.
So, I thought that was okay. A few weeks ago, the road districts for Sundance Ridge got postponed till July, and I've been asked to represent the six homeowners in the South Sundance version of that road district. And we've tried to work with Mr. Huber and the rest of the road district for, well, this actually started a couple of years ago with an HOA. We've been unable to come up with anything that was equitable and fair for all of the parties concerned. I realized when I was here two weeks ago that you prefer to have information in hand prior to those events coming up, and I know they're gonna come up sometime in July, so I've given you basically the information.
Thank you.
That I was going to present.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob, do you have a copy for our state's attorney? Do you have a copy to hand to our state's attorney?
Thank you.
And they probably, I won't take up your time tonight because we'll have this discussion when it gets back on the docket, but I think if you look at the map on page three, you can see why South Sundance Ridge does not want to be involved with the rest of the almost three hundred acres that will eventually be developed and part of that road district. So, and I will be here when it gets back onto the docket. I'll make sure that I get a, a copy to, to Patty when she gets back from vacation next week and discuss it with her, so it can be part of your official package when it comes out.
Thank you, Bob, appreciate the advance. Next item on the agenda is to declare June twenty-fifth as Diane Reese Day, and I will read that resolution. Yankton County Commission, be it resolved that the Yankton County Commission congratulates Diane Reese as the twenty twenty-two Yankton Citizen of the Year, whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners appreciates the dedication and hard work of Diane and others in Yankton County, and whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners commend Diane for her spirit of service and identify her commitment to continuance and growth of a healthy county, which has earned her the honor of Yankton County Twenty Twenty Two Citizen of the Year. And whereas Diane graduated from the Sacred Heart School of Nursing in Yankton and then began her thirty-six year career as a registered nurse at the South Dakota Human Service Center, where she was employed in positions of direct patient care and leadership roles, and whereas Diane is especially proud of the wonderful family she raised to represent the strong values the Yankton County promotes, and whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners identify the strength of the future will depend on those committed to selfless service for others, as exemplified by Diane, and now therefore be it resolved, whereas the Yankton County Commission declares June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as Diane Reese Day, in order, in our great Yankton County dated this, the twenty-fifth day of June twenty twenty-three, Yankton, South Dakota.
Move approval with the, would, would we correct in the second, whereas she's the Twenty Twenty Three Citizen of the Year?
That's how they sent it to me as Twenty Twenty Two.
Okay.
I think it's for last year, yeah.
Yeah, I'd move approval and would congratulate Ms. Reese.
I would second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. I personally know Diane, and she's really a, a great lady. Employs many, many, many fantastic traits. Proud to see her get this award. Next item on the agenda is. Yeah, you got a motion, the second.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the cultivation facility, A two Z LLC, Michael Markle.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Back again. Did you guys have a chance to look over all the data and stuff?
I did last week, or last, last year.
Did you, did you see the container she thought was in there?
Yep.
I think after reading through that, you're gonna have a really challenging job to keep up with everything that's required in that agreement.
Yeah, it's my full-time job.
Anybody have any questions?
I do not, I asked mine last time.
I don't have any new questions.
Hearing none, I'd entertain.
I got one question. Being you're located out in the county, on the north side of the county, what's your, what's your connection with the Sheriff's Department? Going to be on your, on your security cameras and, and the security that you're proposing?
Yankton.
The, the Yankton County Sheriff's Department, yes, what's your connection? How, how are they gonna be notified if there's a, if there's an issue out there?
Panic button.
Great. And after hours?
After hours, there, there'll be video surveillance, and there's an alarm system. It's pretty noisy, and then the DOT station across, across the road, that usually deters a lot of people.
I, I understand that, but.
Yeah.
We need to, we, we need to be notify, be able to notify the Sheriff's Department at two o'clock in the morning if there's something going on like that. Okay.
Any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, let's open it to public comment.
Oh. Does anybody in the public care to comment? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion on the cultivation facility.
I would move to approve the cultivation facility, A two Z LLC.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Good luck. Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Did you draw this, Mike?
I know.
You're getting better, I was gonna say.
Thank you.
He, he not only drew it, but he, he identified that rip rap.
Didn't put, didn't put the compass thing in there, though.
I didn't do the compass, I didn't draw waves, I.
Well, it's, they're either circles or G's, I don't know which one, but anyway.
Cheesy but functionable, I guess. Was out there with John, looked at it, had Paul fly over it with drone and kinda look at things. I guess there's still, there's springs that are coming out of the hillside. That's when they're, if you look, proposing drain tile on the road. Would we fill the road back in totally? No, we would, from the east. We would use the east end of the road and push that west, because the road is kind of on a hill and curve. Would make it safer, lower it. How much? Four feet, five feet, depending on how much fill we need. But before a guy would get to that point, we definitely have to go down there, excavate, get rid of all the trees, all the, all the shrubs, the, there's an old car down there.
I was gonna say junk cars.
That's, makes a good base.
And then start all over. We'd have to get a dozer and a sheep's foot packer. Start at the bottom and work our way up, and as we're going up, you know, the first twenty feet, like to put rip rap in there and implement that drain tile in there too.
So, you'd take the cars out?
Right.
Does the county have a dozer and a packer?
We do not, we had a dozer and it was, it was obsolete for parts, so. We just got rid of that here a couple of years ago. We do have a contractor interested in, in doing the job.
Got an estimate?
If you guys would approve it. My, my guesstimate is around that fifty thousand, and I'm figuring more on the high end, and I am hoping it would be less than that, due to applying for a Jim River grant for rip rap.
We'll, we'll probably need to get like some.
I'm sorry, what?
Do you think we'll need to get like some four oh four permits?
Yes, I need to get ahold of the, the Corps and, and see what we can, how we can proceed.
Okay. Okay, I guess, you know, I, my, my opinion is it'd be great if we can open this road. To me, it comes down to cost, I think with all of us, probably cost, when we discussed this before. If it's gonna, costs and, and if we can effectively fix this road, if it's, if it's gonna be fixed for the long term, I, I'm in favor of it, but if it's gonna be something that we're gonna put money into and we're gonna continue to have problems, that's, then I don't know if I'm gonna be in favor of it, but I guess we won't know until we get an estimate of it.
And, you know, I've gotten an estimate, talked to a couple of different contractors, and the estimate is around forty to fifty thousand bucks, just like Mike said.
Sure.
And, and it's, it's one of those things that, that we, we could possibly do next spring ourselves.
Or we could.
And budget it there. Or if, if we can put it out for bids, if, if we can commit spending fifty or sixty thousand dollars on this, whichever is less.
Fifty.
Put it out, I understand, but we can put it out for bids and, and see what happens, and we can always decide if we wanna hire them to do it, or if we wanna do it ourselves next spring. But I think we need to move forward, I don't think we should kick it down the road, kick the can down the road anymore, and I think we should all agree that we should fix the road.
I, I, I agree, we, we owe it to, we owe it to you guys to give you an answer, I mean, it's been closed long enough. What, five, we're probably going on, was it five or six years?
Going on five.
Five, yeah, going on five years, we, we owe you guys an answer.
And, and one, one thing from our aspect here is, we, we purchased gravel out of a gravel pit that's two miles east of this washout. Right now, we're taking our equipment, running it down the road, up a hill, down a valley, up another hill, running probably six miles of gravel road, tearing that up, so what's that costing us versus fixing this road where it's one more mile to the paved road, up one hill, and you're on flat ground and going. I've paid for transmissions in big trucks, I know what that costs also, so.
And that's one thing too, if this all is a go for the gravel pit situation, that is something we need to consider is dust control for the two places along that road, since they're so close, the one place you have to drive right through the farmyard, and literally theirs is about the same way.
Probably, you know, when that does happen, maybe some speed limit signs or something for these guys to, you know, just, you know, help them out a little bit too, so.
Does that, Mike, have we had a engineer look at this? They pretty much proposed this, but they wanted jetties also, which is.
What's, what is that?
Jetties are fingers of rip rap going out in the water, you know, like you see down in Sioux City. Then you're talking two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars.
I think, I think Mike said he had a, one of the other county commissioners from another county come out and look at this, and he said, well, you replace a culvert and it collapses, you're, got liability there also, so.
That was actually Chuck from LTAP.
Chuck from LTAP, that's right, come out and, and basically said the same thing, so. Yes, it'd be nice to be able to cover, be covered from, from our standpoint, but we're not covered on any other county roads either, so. I guess I would, I would make a motion that we put out for bids for this fall, or this summer, to, to fix the road and make a decision, and, but I think we need to commit to people out there that, that we're gonna take a strong, serious look at fixing that road.
Just to be clear, like, this, this is not, we're not state mandated to maintain this road or anything, this is not like a section line road considered yet or anything.
It is a county maintained gravel road, is what it is.
Yeah, but it's not like a state required, we're not required.
Well, any, any road we could, any road at any time we could shut down.
Okay.
With, you know, conflict, yeah, there'll be conflict, but. You know, in a special situation like this, yes, a guy could.
I have a motion.
Mentioned in the past, yeah, so, just.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, what everyone, everyone's concerned. everyone's concerned, you know, with this being right adjacent to the James River and the fact a good portion of it collapsed into the river. I think we need to be very, very careful though about how we're gonna do it. I, I like your plan here with the, the drain tile and I, I know, Don, you mentioned something with, with it, some engineering on that. I, I don't, I just hate to stick a whole bunch of money into it and, and the same thing happens, uh, I, I don't know, is there's, did you, did you reach out to some, some of the people at, at the state and have them take a look at that or?
Chuck from LTAP and then.
This is kind of what they recommend and, okay.
And like I said, we, we have, we have drawings and everything for what IMEG proposed with the jetties and stuff and it's not far off, but we have no jetties.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Under further discussion, I want to ask, is it, uh, in, in your, this year's budget?
Well, it, it could possibly be, I just gotta get through the summer.
Does the motion include putting it out for bids?
You know, with, with all the extra expense from inflation.
The motion was for putting it out for bids, right?
Putting it out for bids.
Putting it out for bids, correct.
I don't see any harm putting it out for bids and we'll see where it is. And we can always say no later, but I, I don't see any harm bidding it and seeing where it lands, that's, you know, that's, then we know, right? And so.
Can we?
But I, but I would like to include in that motion that if, if the bids come in this year and we reject those bids, that we put it in the budget for next year to fix the road ourselves. With the county employees.
Next spring.
And, and your bid is just for, just for your drawing here, not, no, no, uh, no jetties.
Right. You know, and, and we would finish great at the top and gravel it and.
What, what, what about just, let's just put it out for bids? And see where it lands, cause we, we don't know what's gonna happen, uh. Then we'll have a number and we can, we can always go from there, cause right now we, we're hoping fifty thousand, it could, like you said, it could be two hundred thousand, might be twenty-five thousand, it never.
And, and put, and putting it out for bid.
And we're, we're gonna apply for a grant and maybe it'll come in less than we hoped and, and, you know, you're, you're in charge of the highway and you, you're doing a great job, you might be able to fit it in, so. And if, once we have a bid, we can, we can.
Sure.
I hate to commit us to something when we don't know where, what's gonna happen, so. But I could definitely support getting a bid for it and moving forward.
Yeah, I, I think my only concern is, yeah, it's like, uh, the engineer recommended jetties, I, I've seen a lot of banks eating away and those jetties do work really well, I'm like, would also, I don't know if it's possible to have that as an option or something in your bid.
I think the rip rap will do a lot.
This, this, this drawing, the way it is, basically the way this drawing is right now is you're, when you're stepping it up, you're not getting, you're not allowing that river. And once we get passed to the east of where the, the road basically sunk. It wasn't washed out, it sunk because of a lot of the, the drain tile, from what I seen when I was out there and Mike agrees with that. And once we get around that little bend where we're gonna do this, you know, there's rip rap on the Missouri River that, that creates the, that, that allows it not to wash any further out, so. And the Jim River is the slowest river in the, in the world, so.
Well, and.
Except for when it floods, but.
Yeah, it's still pretty slow.
Like with, with all the new bridges that we do build. It's easier to put rip rap on it now than trying to do it later, so we always put extra rip rap on it above where the flow line would be. That way in case rip rap does disappear down below, that stuff can fall down in place. So we would do the same. Same aspect here. And then Dan, to get, getting back to you about the bid, you know, it's not like if we bid it out, my plan is to put in the bid that we're gonna do the removal of the trees and the, the, uh, old car and anything to make it cheaper.
Yep. You guys do a good job.
And, and material costs, there's, there's actually, I think the road has been built up over the years about five or six feet above the original level of the road, so. There's, there's extra material there that we can use to fill the, fill what fell in, so.
Cause we just, when John and I were out there, uh, we were looking on the east end there, there's a box culvert. Well, heck, the, the guardrail of the box culvert is like three foot below the road surface.
Yeah, it's, so.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, and, uh, just to give you guys a heads up, um, today we, uh, we tried out the new paver and, well, new to us paver and, thank you, it, uh, hell of a machine compared to the old one, I didn't realize how outdated the old one was.
Cool. Are we getting rid of the old one?
Yeah, that's, I forgot, I need to get that on surplus, I get that on the agenda for you guys.
For next, next meeting for surplus.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike, and, uh, tell your, uh, tell your employees, uh, we appreciate all the work they're doing, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Go watch the baseball game. Jody, would you come up to the?
I'm Jody Klute and I live right beside where the road has fallen through. And I guess my question is, you know, I've, I've sat here for the last almost five years listening to this same thing and it sounds really good and I hope this all works. But my question is, what kind of a timeline are you looking? I didn't hear where you put a bid out and, and, and it has to be in by such and such a date so that we know. I mean, if we're gonna wait till next fall or next spring to try to fix this again, that's a ways down the road and I just tonight took a picture because I thought, well, just so everybody kind of knows where we're at. I'm not a very good phone person here, shoot. Um, right here, okay.
Well, I think the answer to your question is, we'll go out to bid within the next month, right?
Well, first I have to write the bid. And then I have to advertise it for two weeks. And then we can open bids and then I got to, after we open the bids.
Yeah, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, we have to, yeah, have to.
So, just to get through the bidding process, we're talking at least a month. Month and a half?
Yep.
Okay, well, this is the road today. Okay, so this is our yard where the sign is, which I'm not sure why it's in our yard instead of on the road. And the sign went down when you put the gravel, whoever put the gravel on hit the sign and never stopped to pick it up, Mike. So I don't know if it was a hired job that was done or if your guys did it. And I'm not complaining. Uh, we appreciate, we do, we appreciate everything everybody does, but go ahead, pass my phone down. That's what we're dealing with. And the way the sign is, if somebody hits that, they are going to be hurt, seriously. So it's something, we, we've gotta get on it. It, we've, it's, it's been going on too long. And the way the sign is setting, that fell, it encourages people to go around it. And then they're turning around on that curve behind where all that is, that we, we'd have to make more of a permanent. So people aren't driving through our yard, driving, turning around in our yard. My original letter that I wrote to you guys in December said if something isn't done, we're requesting that the county maintain our road, our driveway. It's ridiculous.
Mike, can, can you get another sign up out there?
Yeah, I guess we'll.
It's a small little sign right by the road where you turn off the highway.
Michael, put a sign out there.
There's, there is a road closed ahead sign that people drive right up the corner.
But, uh, nobody pays any attention to it. I mean, I don't know what, you know.
We, we can't be out there and policing that. We're gonna, we're gonna fix the road. Whether we do it this, this year or we do it next spring. I'm assuming we're gonna fix the road. We can't police people going down that road is, well, that, we, that, that was five years ago, we didn't. We're, we're acting on it now. I'm acting on it now with Mike and the Highway Department. Uh, just getting, getting involved in it for, since January one.
Right.
So I can assure you, we're not gonna kick the can down the road for five more years.
That's, that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
And you know, I guess we don't feel we should be responsible for setting up the signs and doing all that. We did in the beginning and we're not going to anymore because we're not gonna be liable for it. It's, it's time. And I just wanted to know what kind of a timeframe we were looking at. Because, you know, that'll be six years then, going on six years, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think your plan is a good plan to lower that road. Since we've lived there, there's been two.
You, you have to tell us who you are.
Into the mic.
I'm sorry. I'm Willie Klute, William Klute. I think your plans are good plans to lower that road. Take, save that gravel, lower the road. Since I've lived there, there's been two bad accidents, cause it's, it's a corner and it's a blind corner. Going, you know, coming off there and I think this is a good plan to lower that road.
Good.
Good, thank you.
Thanks for all the help here.
Excellent.
I'll, uh, I'll get some permanent posts out there to tie that barricade up to.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Next item on the agenda is the Oliver plat.
We have six plats tonight, first one being the plat of lot eleven of block six. Law overlook subdivision in the southeast quarter of section seven and in the northeast quarter of section eighteen. All in township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Dan, second by Wanda, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Oliver replat.
Second one, a replat of lot sixteen, block three, law overlook subdivision in the northeast quarter of section eighteen. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Hereafter to be known as lot sixteen A, block three, law overlook subdivision in the northeast quarter of section eighteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the plat. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same.
Next one's a plat of tracks one and two, culverts addition in the east half of the southwest quarter and in the southeast quarter of section five, township ninety-three north, range fifty-four west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Are they, they breaking up one plot into two, is that what?
Right.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Wanda, second by Ryan. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carries.
Next one's a plat of track one, L and L schwach addition in the southeast quarter and northeast quarter of section thirty. Township ninety-four north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Your diagram doesn't have a, usually put a circle and put a location.
I know, I see that too.
I don't know where it is.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Dan, second by John. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carries.
Next one is a plat of track one. Cronazal addition in the northwest quarter of section one, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve the plat.
Second.
By Wanda, second by Dan, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same. Motion carries.
The last one that went through the city process also, it's a plat of tracks two, three and four of law addition in the north half of the southeast quarter of section two, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian. City and county of Yankton, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Gary.
Lot of plats.
Next item on the agenda is claims.
Uh, no.
Oh, minutes, minutes, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is minutes from the June sixth and ninth meetings.
I would note on the June ninth meetings, it says that Mr. Healy moved to adjourn. And Mr. Mark would second it, I think that probably is supposed to say Heine.
Yep.
Just saying.
Make that change? Okay.
I'd second Wanda's motion to approve with the correction.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same. Now the claims.
Uh, move approval.
Dan approves.
There's part one and part two.
Yeah, part one.
And I abstain on part two.
Part one of the claims. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, John. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carries. Next, the auditor, uh.
No, part two.
No, there's part two.
Part two, I'm sorry.
Move approval of, uh, claims part two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve, uh, claims part two. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Pose the same. Motion carries. Auditor, uh, treasurer report.
Move to approve the auditor treasurer report.
Second.
Although I do have a question.
Have a motion, uh, to approve by Wanda, second by Dan. Discussion, Wanda.
Um, we have, we're very fortunate to have, um, some money in savings and some money in certificates of deposit. But I see that Elkhorn Valley Bank is not um, on here and, um, I guess, and I haven't personally talked to Patty about that, but it would seem that we should spread that money around a little bit.
Any discussion?
I would agree, they, uh, moved to town and are looking to expand their business here in, in Yankton and Yankton County, so. And I'm sure that they have some loans outstanding to residents in Yankton County, so I would, uh, support that, uh. If you want to visit with Patty and see if there's some of those certificates of deposit or something that we could move over there.
Okay.
I support that too.
I think, I think, um, yeah, Patty Vavre does a, a great job with our finances and I, I think she does a, a great job. I think that's something, um, we could visit with her on and, and that's really her, and statutory, uh, statutory responsibility and, uh, I believe the, um, you know, the, the bank uh, individuals who are interested should go maybe have a, have that conversation with her, I don't know if they have her already. But again, you know, I think Patty does a, a great, a great job, so.
I think she does a good job too, and I will suggest that to Mr. Peterson.
Yep, yep. I'd say go, yep, talk to the treasurer and, and we'll relay that, so.
But I see they are advertising four point eight percent.
Okay, so, uh, we've had our discussion. Uh, let's move on to the pool cash report.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Dan, second by John. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same, motion carries.
We didn't actually approve the, uh, treasurer's report.
Move approval.
Wait, we had, we had a approval of motion, we. Wait, we had, we had a approval of motion, we just never voted.
Oh, we didn't vote, okay, getting going too fast. Uh, all in favor of the approving the treasurer's report?
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Good catch, Ryan.
Motion carries. Now the, uh, move the ambulance assigned dollars to unassigned.
What, what is, uh, Karen, were, were these assigned to a particular project?
I, I don't know, sorry. Patty did not explain to me.
I'm wondering if this wasn't for that ambulance, I, I have heard that.
I think there was, there was an addition to the, on the ambulance service for, uh, uh, electric lift for the, when they were loading in, rather than the, the people having to lift the buggy up into the ambulance. And I'm wondering if that's not part of that.
Cuz I believe we got that new ambulance recently, and so I assume that's part of that.
Yes, and just a, a footnote, that, uh, that new ambulance, on the first trip out, was a, it was a transfer, and on the way home, the, one of the front steer tires blew out, the sidewall, on the brand new ambulance. But the ambulance ser, or the people that built the ambulance, actually, uh, it was towed into one of the car dealers in Sioux Falls, and they did not have a, a rim nor a tire for that, but the people that built the ambulance at four o'clock in the morning, uh, took a tire and a rim out to Sioux Falls and put it on the ambulance so that we could get it back in, in order, so.
Under warranty?
Under warranty, yes.
That's good. Do we need to transfer this, or should we wait till Patty comes back, or?
I don't think, there's no big hurry.
Let, let's just wait, and let's ask those questions then, because I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that's what that's for, but I'd rather know for sure.
Yep.
Next, uh, item on the agenda is public comment. Gary, do we have any other public comment there? Is there anybody in the audience? Okay, we have a.
Looks like Chris, like we have one, Chris.
I have one. I always answer in class, too. Uh, Chris Patton, and I, I've attended a few meetings here, and I have to say, I don't envy you guys. It's a tough job, especially when it comes to the budget, and I taught business undergraduate and graduate level for fifteen years for Cardinal Stritch and Bethel University, and I've also been through some tough times when I worked at Pillsbury, and I've had my own businesses, and there's a couple of, of sort of rules of thumb or things to be considered in a time like this where we have inflation costs, I mean, we heard about that. And it's not only for you, it's for all of the residents of Yankton County. And so, you know, in a, in a company, and I, I know running a government's different, but in a company faced with some of the things we're looking at, the first thing they do is they don't hire new people. The next thing they do is they ask all the managers, find five percent you can cut, and everyone in the department, we're asking, you find something, you find something, because it all adds up. And so I'd like to suggest you, you do that, I think they, the county people here expect that, and part of the reason is, there was a guy, oh, I don't know, maybe a hundred years ago now, his name was C. Northcoke Parkinson, and he came up with Parkinson's Law, and this is one of the key things in, in working with business, and from Wikipedia, which was a short definition, it said Parkinson's Law is the observation that public administration, bureaucracy, and officialdom expands regardless of the amount of work to be done. This was attributed mainly to two factors, that officials want subordinates, not rivals, and that officials make work for each other. So, and I, I'm just using these examples, I'm not getting into details, but like, for instance, hiring an HR manager. I mean, that would be technically a subordinate to the, to the board, and I'll guarantee you, HR manager's gonna make more work for everybody. That's what they've done in every company that I've ever had anything to do with. And then there are hidden opportunities for savings, and here I'm, I'm gonna jump off into the water a little bit, but I, I would assume that Thrive is probably getting some money from the county, and that could be something that could be saved, and, and, you know, if we have more money needed for the ambulance, they could say, well, you know, we're not gonna do this anymore, it's gonna go help the ambulance, and they've got expertise in getting grants, and if they don't, I'm sure District Three would be happy to help them in order to make up for whatever they might lose from the county. And lastly, for the youth, I think this is a real opportunity, I, I was back here, oh, I don't know, a couple meetings ago, and was talking about the troubled youth and the extra expense in there, and I don't know how many of those young people could get part-time jobs, but I would suggest those that could be cleared for part-time jobs should take them, and I would suggest that forty percent of their earnings go to help support the program for the first six months, they make it through there, drop it to twenty percent, they make it beyond that, let them get all the wages, that way for performance, you're getting more and more, and they're gonna learn responsibility, and guess what, probably too much taxes were withheld, so they'll have to file taxes and learn how to do that, I had to do that at twelve. And it, and, you know, they get into good habits, and it also helps them to appreciate what's going on, and we get a little bit of money out of that. And I think if you can do things like that, rather than come up with new taxing, uh, facilities, or some way new tax, I think the people in Yankton County would, would thank you and appreciate all of that. That's all I got to say, and I wish you the best, because I know it's not gonna be easy.
Thank you, some good ideas.
Dan Schenkel, I'm out by Utica, just got a few comments, you guys have been talking about your strategic planning. I'm gonna start out with truth, regardless of understanding, or disbelief is still the truth, and nobody's talking about the election integrity. We're, um, talking technology and stuff, and nothing's coming up about that, uh, election integrity, there's reports coming out. The Holderman report came out, it's, was held up for like almost, I don't know, two years since twenty twenty, I'll bet. Talking about the machines can be hacked, we, here in South Dakota, we have B Pro, E S and S. There are two systems, from what I'm gathering, they're quite susceptible to hacking, and we've, if we haven't got, this figured out yet, there's been problems, um, I'm trying to bring this forward to you guys again, to keep you guys out of the huskow. I mean, your butts are on the line, you gotta be on the right side of the fence when this thing comes down. Do you wanna get rid of that machine, go back to paper, or are you gonna defend it all the way to jail? Uh, it's enough on that thing, uh, on roads and bridges and stuff like that, I guess I wanna know, why don't we have money? We got tax from wheels, we got property tax, we got truck registration field, fee, fees. Why don't we have money for fixing stuff? Evidently, you got, you're talking about going to another bank with CDs and things, evidently there's money there. Yeah, I guess, you know.
There's money.
We, we wanna know, as, as the.
Public comment, we're not supposed to comment.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
As the public, we wanna know, um, where you guys are coming from, why we, we keep saying we don't have money for roads. And, and I mean, you know, I, we understand, if there's, you know, say like the Jim River Bridge up by the Rock Church, are, are we really certain that bridge needs to be replaced, or is it the road that's north of it that needs fixing? I mean, the water runs over the road to the north of the bridge, is the bridge really a big problem? Like the, the Valen Road, uh, you know, that Johnson Bridge, that one needed welding, it was busted. It was definitely a problem, and now we're talking about the replacing the bridge over there, I, I, I guess if there's cracks and things in there, why aren't we fixing it? Uh, just because it's fifty, sixty years old, or whatever, doesn't mean it needs replacing. I, I'm not sure we always get the right thing from our engineers, I guess is what I'm trying to tell you, so. Trying to be, I mean, put your money into projects that need to be done, we want our roads fixed, we want our bridges to be kept up. The other thing is, I think Wanda brought up about that youth diversion program, about having them kids with, uh, bracelets, or whatever you call it, the tracking devices, and that would be, uh, a great thing, keeping the kids in their homes instead of detention or jail, whatever you wanna call it. I don't, I don't know why we're feeding some kid that maybe stole a couple dollars out of the Walmart store or any other store for that matter, so. I guess we, I guess we would like to have answers, so.
Your three minutes is about up, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, public comment?
I'm Laura Catalik, and I just wanted to, um, invite everyone, there's a guest speaker, James Taylor, next Monday night at six o'clock at the Archery Center, and it's sponsored by Families, Feeding Families, and he's just gonna talk about ag and climate change and how those things are related, so, if you're interested.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll close, public comment. Commissioner updates.
You know, start with me, I got a bunch.
Good, go.
All right, so, I'm glad you guys brought this up, cuz I, um, if you wanna know about the county budget, Mike listened to it, there's about a five-hour, uh, sermon at the state that is dealing with, uh, county funding, and eighty-eight percent of the county budget is statutorily required. So that means it goes to, you know, your auditor, register, treasurer, deeds, the state mandates that this will be spent, you will spend money on this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and this, so on average, eighty-eight percent of a county's budget is required by state law. We're not even into roads and bridges yet, which is our biggest expenditure, so. Now you look at, uh, counties like, uh, Minnehaha and Pennington, and you see the skyrocketing costs of, uh, their sheriff's office, and their court costs, and their state's attorney's costs, and you can see why. I attended with, uh, our deputy state's attorney, Deb Lilly, our, the indigent service, uh, uh, they had a indigent service, uh, task force meeting in Vermillion, and South Dakota is one of two states where the county pays the, uh, certain, pays the cost for indigent legal service. It's us and Pennsylvania, we're the only two states in the nation, which I wasn't surprised by that, and then Pennsylvanians now looking at going to that. So we pay, we pay the, basically all the court, court costs to prosecute, and then if somebody doesn't have any, the, the means to fund that, and they're indigent, they don't have any money, well then we have to pay those costs as well, by state law, so we can.
Defense costs.
Yeah, defense costs, um, and then the sole, basically the sole, our main source of income is property tax. But, as I was surprised to hear this, out of your property tax bill, it was broke down that counties receive about twenty-seven percent of property tax, your schools by far get the majority of property tax. But even at the state level, when they broke it down, they said, well, the county gets this, but the county, we're gonna lump it in with the townships, and we're gonna lump it in with your sanitary districts, and all your special districts, and your ambulance districts, so that the state level, they didn't even have the true breakdown of what the county gets, they just lumped it in, it's about this, around twenty-seven percent, but it's actually must, much less than that. So it's, it's a total mind shift that needs to happen, even at the state, because even the state, uh, revenue people couldn't give us exact numbers on what the counties get. So when people talk about, why don't we have any money, eighty-eight percent of our budget is already required by state law before we even get to roads and bridges, and then we're only getting probably around twenty-five percent of the property taxes, there's not a whole lot of money left to spend, so. It was eye-opening to me, it's on the state, uh, website, go look it up, it's about five hours long, it's an educational experience, wasn't it, Mike? Was it educational to you, and, uh, a little depressing too, so, um. Next.
Next.
Yeah.
And, and to pity, uh, to, to follow up with that, uh, you talk about bridges that need to be repaired, the, the paved road going from north of Menno to the Stone Church Bridge, all the way to Highway forty-six, it's considered by the state, one of the main corridors going north and south in the, in the county. Uh, we have the, the Johnson Bridge Road is considered by the state as a main thoroughfare going east and west. Uh, Fleeg's Bridge is probably not considered by the state as that important, but guess what? It is a main corridor from Yankton to, to Gayville, which, which piggybacks around to Highway fifty. So there's three bridges that the state basically tells us that we gotta maintain. Now, if, if you lived, uh, in Menno, and you wanted to come grocery shopping in Yankton, how would you feel if we closed that bridge? Because it's, it's, that bridge and the, and the Johnson Bridge Road, and the Fleeg Bridge are right next to being condemned. So they need to be replaced if we wanna ma, if we wanna keep our county, and we do get, you know, some, some help from the city of Yankton every now and then, nobody really realizes it or thinks that, but, but, uh, it, it's, it's, it's not an easy task to sit up here and try to defend ourselves, when, when you're standing out there, sitting out there, asking where the money goes, like Dan said, eighty-eight percent of it goes to, to, to fund our, our obligations that are put on us by the state. So if you really want to open that up, talk to our county and district representatives, cuz they're the only ones that can talk to the people in the state.
Every county funding bill went down in flames at the state, every single one.
Okay, that's.
So that's enough, that's enough, I'll get off my soapbox now, too, so now it's up to, uh, Wanda.
Well, Mr. Clemish and I went to the, uh, and toured, if you will, toured the, uh, city of Yankton, formerly the youth, um, youth area, and that the sheriff wants us to utilize, if we have to utilize anything for, uh, naughty children. Uh, we do have a very large area downstairs in the safety center that belongs to the county, wouldn't require as much upkeep, wouldn't require as much repair, because the city building is very, very old versus the county, and, uh, we're, we, Mr. Clemish and I, um, are looking at trying to see what it would cost to make that into something where the court could put these naughty juveniles downstairs, rather than driving them to Sioux Falls for four hundred and fifty dollars.
You're talking about detention?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
No, we're talking about playing pool and paintball, yes, detention.
I don't know what the definition of a naughty kid is, I was naughty all my life.
Well, that was back in the day, they didn't care, now they care.
They sent you to the army back then, now they send you to detention.
Okay, Ryan.
Well, I've just been working on that whole technology thing a little bit more, um, having more meetings with some, uh, various companies about some possible services that they could provide in terms of streamlining our IT. When we talk about, you know, making sure that, uh, we do have to make sure that we have our facilities, our IT secure as well, that we have, uh, machines that are up to date, and we have to go through, we should be going through regular audits and things like that, and, uh, and have made some, made some forward progress on de, defining some, uh, possibly some protocols that we should have, so, and some procedures that we should have within our, I, our IT, um, program, that should be kinda followed throughout all of our departments, so. That should be kinda followed throughout all of our departments, so.
I'll go back, I wanna, I want Dan to clarify that eighty-eight percent, will you please? That's not including salaries and.
No, that's, that goes, you know, to your, your auditor, treasurer, registered deed sheriff. The things that are required that the county has to have, has to have, that mandated from the state that we, we don't have an option, we have to, have to pay for it. So, um, eh, yeah, that's, that's what the, the state analysis was, so.
Any other items to bring before to the commission?
Nope.
Now to entertain a, uh, motion to go into executive session.
I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same, motion carries, we are now in executive session pursuant, uh, issue pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash parentheses one. Thank you, everybody, for com, thank you, everybody, for coming.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun, I think, so, and bring a lot of people in. How, how best to, uh, how about your finances, how can you do better than getting some outside money? Next June.
Next June.
Yeah. Yeah. The funny thing is, while the guy that made the decision, speaking small, is, or Ed Hondo, his wife and son, Kenny's son, got out to help with that, uh, so, and I'm thinking, leave it to a teenager. He's got his phone, he's kind of moneyed, his daughter was down here playing in the softball tournament. So let's leave, they were mini-lagging, so. Uh, so she'll be in the tournament at the same time, next year, too. But, yeah, that was, we, we know, at least there's gonna be a parade.
What happens in the year stays in the year, that's the money.
So, so, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't even complain, but, but you can see in the last forty years, our state's attorney costs doubled. Our jails are basically at the max, and they, they had a new jail, built a new jail in Sioux Falls, in, uh, in, uh, and you can't hold up, okay, and then guess what, you get a probation person from the state, asleep. And you throw them in your jail, they pay us less than it actually costs.
This is the total answer, it's all, I mean, he's sent back to Mexico or wherever, and I, I.
And then, and then we got more pot, that creates more of them.
But, but, you know.
And so we got more pot facilities.
Well, these guys, these guys who are, who are on that, they're doing.
They start all from pot.
You, you basically have to almost give somebody a, 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 because these guys will come straight up and they just, oh, girl. Or what's gonna call, until they do something serious enough where they don't.
That, that's why if there's a priority, it's gotta be young people, whether there's a chance to, to show.
And that's right, Sioux Falls is having to build that new facility, you were going from two hundred and fifty dollars, they got four hundred and fifty-eight. Those are basically what I'm doing.
Are we creating our own problems, a lot of this other stuff, without, without, without enforcement, of, you know, uh, our judiciary enforcing and putting some. I mean, it's a revolving door up the floor, or something, they just, they can't do anything.
I mean, the ju, judges gotta do what they're gonna do, you know, and that's, and that's, that's, you will do this, we, and our hands are tied, we have to do it.
And we, we have some serious, I mean, social issues that you want to.
I, 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 but, but listen to that, and you can see why it's, and Yankton, we're okay, but these small towns, what are they gonna do?
I, I agree, I agree with the comments, we gotta shake up the state.
And, and, and the state, the state saved hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars by not building those bridges. But now the bill's coming to be.
He's right, we gotta turn it back to the state, yeah.
All right, see you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Five-hour presentation.
Well, I thought it was gonna be a special, it was really turned, turned on.
Well, you know, just, we just simply punish them, you know.
That's the breakdown of the family, there's a real, the wall, yeah, if you go back and see, oh, yeah. Well, if you've been to foreign countries like I have, see what the punishments are there. People freak out, the punishments that they have in some of the foreign countries, doesn't it?
Oh, I know, last year.
How about Kenny?
Kenny.
Yeah, I was, I was in Singapore and a guy was there doing graffiti, and he got painted.
And you know what? That guy will never do it again, he's such a plastic impressioner, you're playing great.
It was a spoiled, uh, American kid, that was there. Yeah, uh, he could do it. I mean, it was gaining a lot of attention.
That's all we gotta prove, if they wanna cut costs in these counties, just get Kenny in there.
Or if you create, and do something, I'm gonna make sure I answer.
So you were four countries.
Huh?
So you, you've been around the world, huh?
I've been to eighteen foreign countries, nineteen, I'm California.
What, are, what's your name?
Scotty, yeah. Uh, Dan was in the, in, uh, uh, I'd say that's deeper than we've heard, yeah.
Well, we lost their audience.
Oh, that's unfortunate. I make a motion to go back on the, come out of executive session and go into regular session.
Second. Have a motion by Wanda, come out of executive sess, session, a second by Dan, discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose the same, motion carries.
I would make a motion to pay MI twenty-three dash oh-one dash zero-zero-six, MI twenty-three dash oh-two dash zero-zero-two, MI twenty-three dash oh-two zero-zero-four, MI twenty-three dash oh-two dash zero-zero-five, MI twenty-three zero-two zero-zero-six, MI twenty-three dash zero-two dash zero-zero-seven, and MI da, twenty-three dash oh-two dash zero-zero-eight in the aggregate amount of four thousand six hundred sixty dollars pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two sub three.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Wanda and a second by Ryan, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same, motion carries, items for the next meeting?
At some point, we need to start budget.
Yes. When our bu, budgets are due at the end of this month.
And Patty is actually on her way back.
Well, this, this is the last one for June, though.
Can we set a, do, do we wanna set some dates in July?
Patty's gotta be here to do the budget, that's why we're waiting.
Okay, no, that's fine.
And she will be back tonight, from Italy.
Well, that's fast.
Tell her we'll start tomorrow and then break her.
I, um, I'd like to report that, uh, the highway department, uh, completed their work on West City, uh, uh, West Eleventh Street.
Oh, nice.
And, uh, well, they're gonna put another top seal on it.
Nice.
In August, I think, uh, and it looks really great, they did a great job, um.
Did they use the new machine?
No. No.
John, can you get some photos of that? Cuz, you know, we don't, we don't celebrate that, you know, not, not one person in here said, oh, wait, great job on that. You know, it's always, this is not good, this is not good, and then when we do something good, nobody notices.
Fix a bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
The point I'm, I'm gonna get to that on this issue, though, is that, uh, it's been suggested, and I think, I think it's probably, uh, a fair, uh, suggestion, uh, that we, uh, put, uh, load limits on that road. Uh, I talked with Mike, and, uh, he concurs, I think he said, uh, seven ton per axle would probably be appropriate. Uh, the obvious, uh.
Do we have to put that on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz it has to be approved, yeah. The obvi, uh, the, the big, uh, concern really is, is cement trucks and, and possibly some of the large farm equipment. And the farm equipment has access to their fields in a route other than on West Eleventh Street.
Yeah.
So, it, we'll bring it up for discussion next time.
Yep.
For vote.
Sounds good. I talked to him today, too, so we'll, we'll have a good discussion next time.
Any other things, uh, we need to discuss? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.